Having some technical difficulties joining us, but hopefully she will join shortly. In terms of the rubric, I think we can take that as read, but if you will please put your mobile phones on silent, that will be much appreciated. And that way we will not be interrupted and please keep yourselves muted unless you are speaking. I shall just mute you, cancel allow that. We have a long agenda today with lots of numbers and bits and pieces. Can we start, please, with apologies for absence?
Yes, we just have apologies from councillor Linda Pedderick.
Thank you very much. Can we see a show of hands to accept those apologies, please? Fantastic. Thank you very much indeed. Agreement on the agenda between parts one and two. I do not believe there's anything in part two today, so we have nothing to decide there. Declarations of interest. Any councillors with any declarations of interest in any items on the agenda tonight, please? Nobody? Okay, thank you very much indeed. Dispensations, I presume we have none? We have none. Minutes of the meeting. Have you all read and understood and looked at and not understood, of course you've understood. I don't mean to say that, read and inwidely digested the minutes and do you agree that they are a valid representation of the meeting that happened a long, long, long while ago in a different world? Can I have a proposal for accepting the minutes, please? Thank you very much. And a second, anyone want to second that? So it's proposed by councillor Moorhood, seconded by, I think councillor Goodman Bradbury was there briefly before councillor Foden and a show of hands, please, to accept the minutes. Thank you very much indeed. And when, when times are different and I can physically get into the office to sign those off, I will do so, but I'm not quite sure what the arrangement is for that, but I'm sure I'll find out. Item number six, recovery plan funding. You have a report that was emailed to you about the recovery plan and various items in that plan that we might consider funding from Dawlish Town Council funds. Angie, I presume you're going to help us and run through this one, is that correct? Or do you want me to run through it or? It's up to you. If you'd like to present it, you're very welcome to. If you'd like me to present it, I'm happy to.
That's fine. I think most of it is in the paper which you've had in advance. The main issue for this paper coming to Finance and General Purposes Committee is because the funding has not materialised through the reopening High Street safely fund where we don't to access some funding. In terms of the proposals, I think it's clear where there's a asking for a decision or where we're potentially saying this is an alternative route. I'm happy to answer any questions that councillors may have.
Okay, thank you very much indeed. I would suggest if councillors are happy, we go through these proposals one by one and have a decision on what we wish to do with, with each of those. And I think our decision may be that we wish to go forward with it and fund it or that we wish to put it to one side for further discussion or that we wish to say no at this stage for whatever reason, probably the three choices that we, we have on each of these, each of these items, I would suggest. I don't think this is a point to, a time to, to look at going through any of the details of these. I think they have been looked at and are complete. Angie, is that, that correct? There's not really, this isn't really a time to start altering these proposals. But it is a time to say yes or no or think again. Okay, thank you very much. So the first item on the list is talking about Dawlish Town Council banner signs down the strand, including some with social distancing reminders. So we are looking at a total here of £7,400 excluding VAT, but of course we claim the VAT back or £875 depending on whether we have three banners or four banners. And this would be funded from Dawlish Town Council reserves. Would anybody like to talk to this? This project, item number one on page two of the report that we have. Councillor, Angie.
Sorry, apologies, Chairman. I forgot to mention that when discussing this with Andrew at the interim, we were looking at the funding coming from the investing in Dawlish funding as opposed to reserves where there is some funding that has been put aside as a lot of this is actually investing in Dawlish itself.
Okay, thank you. I'm slightly confused. Councillor Pedderick, is that you twice? Yes. I'm not sure which, okay. One presumably will drop out, sorry. So this is, oh, there we go. Fantastic. Let me, oh, you've done that well done. So properly named. Would anybody like to start the discussion on this first item? Councillor Foden.
Thank you. I think this item is really important as a way of reminding people to stay alert and to keep distance. And if other councillors here at this meeting are, I think, the same way as me, then I'd be very happy to support this.
Anybody else wish to discuss this one?
The last I heard.
Councillor Taylor, Terry Louther.
That's the one, yeah. The last I've heard, in fact, we, well, it's an awful lot of money. And I'm usually versed in spending money, but this is a bit. I've heard that, although I've not been down there, that in fact we've had lots of problems with distancing, going down the strand and places like that, not so much with locals, but with visitors and so on. So maybe it would be in the general interest to remind them. In which case I'd, I think I'd agree with it.
Okay, thank you. So would anybody like to propose, if nobody else is to discuss this, anybody like to propose? Councillor Pedderick, would you like to speak?
Yeah, sorry, I seem to, I think I've got a good wifi connection, but for some reason it keeps dropping out. You hear me okay?
Can hear you fine councillor.
That's okay, excellent, yeah. I mean, I've had a look through this and as councillor says, it's, it's a lot of money. But I think it's going to encourage people into the town safely. I've got a question actually on the banners. Are the banners going to be displayed on the tops of the lampposts?
That's a yes from, from the officer.
Yes, they were, along from the existing banners, we got up, four of them will come down or three of them would come down and be replaced with the new messaging. It wouldn't, it would be quite soft in terms of messaging. So it wouldn't have a distance as you'd expect, but just reinforce the message that's currently there. And I think it is worth saying that we have had complaints from both businesses and from the public regarding social distancing in terms of both the town centre and across the town. And this is mirrored in other towns. And we have been encouraged by environmental health to do as much as we can to help people be reminded of the social distancing message.
Thank you very much. Councillor Lyn Goodman Bradbury, I think you were next with your little blue hand.
I was, thank you. I was just gonna, if it hasn't been proposed, I was gonna propose that we, we accept this because I think it's a very sensible move forward and it, it backs up the markings that some kind of person has been going around spraying on the floor as well. And you're right, with the crowds that have been seen down the strand, on the lawn, etcetera, it's, we need to do everything we can to keep that message out there.
Thank you very much. Councillor Val Moorhood.
I was just going to say that our projects officer knows really, she's got a better idea of whether we need three or four. And I would propose that we accept her recommendations for whether it's three or four.
I think councillor, I think from the, from the look on her face, she wants us to make a decision.
Okay, I would propose that we accept the idea of four banners.
Okay, councillor Goodman Bradbury, does that, does that work with your, your proposal? Councillor Val Moorhood, can I take it you are seconding that proposal?
Yes, fine.
Thank you very much. I think councillor Mary Louther indicated you wanted to speak, is that right? No? Okay. Would anybody else like to speak to this? Are we all done? Wave your hands frantically now in a royal manner if you wish to. No? Okay, fantastic. Okay, can I see a show of hands for, for the accepting four banners? I think that's unanimous. Thank you very much indeed. Next one, number two, Chamber of Trade to produce online and imprint local business information booklet. Advertising businesses open to include Holcombe, Cockwood areas beyond town areas. Chamber to make an application via the grant scheme to DTC for consideration. I think this one is very straightforward and in reality, we're not actually suggesting any money here. So I would like to propose from the chair that we say yes, please. I think it's very good to encourage them to produce that. I think that's key information that we should be, should be doing. Councillor Goodman Bradbury.
I just thought very quickly I would step in and say I second that proposal because I agree, it's a very important thing. I think it's a great idea.
Okay, thank you very much. Councillor Val Moorhood, sorry, your hands, hands gone up.
I was simply going to say that since we specifically mentioned Holcombe and Cockwood and other areas, we should specifically mention Dawlish Warren.
Indeed, I think it is implied in there, but yes, we will.
It is implied, but I think it should be specified.
Absolutely right.
Thank you.
Okay, I would agree with that entirely. Any other comments from anybody? Now, can we move quickly to a vote then to say, to approve this goes forward and we ask for a, ask them to come forward with a grant. My, my only concern, one concern thinking about that, the next available option for coming forward with a grant is likely to be towards the end of September. So I would suggest that if we want them to come forward more quickly than that, we suggest that that grant could come to town council at the beginning of September. But even, even that's a bit late really for a grant, isn't it? So maybe, maybe we, maybe we want to do something to enable that to happen because otherwise it's going to be stuck. Town clerk.
And Chairman, thank you. You may want to delegate authority to myself or the officer to approve that. Subject to, in consultation with yourself and the vice chair, the mayor and deputy mayor, that may get around the August recess.
Okay, I think that's an excellent plan. I'd like to change the proposal so that we move it into a grant, subject to delegate the, as Andrew said, delegate to the town clerk in consultation with mayor, myself and deputy mayor, was it? For, for approval there. So if that can be the, the motion, if people are happy for that, if we can see a show of hands for that, please, unless any, council, sorry, councillor Louther, were you trying to speak there before?
Yes, I was. Do you want to put a seal? I don't know, there's no reference to the cost, where it's made, the cost. Do we know what the application is likely to be?
Councillor, Angie Webber, it's really difficult remembering who's councillor and who isn't on the different. I know it says it in front of your names and I know absolutely intimately, but we're such a good team. Angie Webberhead.
Just to say that there isn't a quote as such for the chamber trade. What looks likely to happen is a lot of information that's been gathered via Helping Dawlish on a weekly basis which is published will be turned into the more formal online version. I think they'll be funded by the chamber themselves. And then I think they'll also put some money into the print version from discussions I've had. But there's no indication at the moment. It depends on the print run.
Okay. All right. Any absence, any further information, I'd agree with the proposal.
Okay, thank you councillor Louther. Right, so any further comment or shall we go to the vote now? No, let's go to the vote then. So all those in favour. I think that's unanimous. Thank you very much indeed. Item number three. Walking and cycling booklets to be reprinted. So this one's a slightly longer piece, I won't read it all out. This is extending the original booklets that we had a year ago. Now, we did already authorise a year ago to spend £2,000 reprinting for the booklets for this year. That hasn't happened. May I ask the clerk why that didn't happen? Was that because the coronavirus came in in time to stop it and made sensible or was it just?
No, Chairman, thank you. There was a bit of backwards and forwards. I think the, one of the interested parties was the TIC and officers there. And there were some conversations with another person whose name eludes me. And it came to a head that they weren't printed at that time. So those monies are still in abeyance but are approved for this purpose.
Okay, so we are looking at a total cost of some four and a half thousand pounds, of which £2,000 is already approved. So do we wish as a committee to extend that, to add an additional two and a half thousand pounds to fund a print run of 10,000 leaflets with walking and cycling and tree and historical, no, no, and tree information in there? Would anybody like to start the conversation on this one? Councillor Foden, your hand is up.
Thank you. Yes, I'd like to propose that we do approve this. I remember working on this over 12 months ago and liaising with the TIC about getting reprinted. And I think now that we're encouraging people to use safe forms of transport, in particular walking and cycling, I think this would be excellent. So I'd like to propose that we do approve this.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second? Would anybody else like to comment on the proposal? Are you wishing to comment or second that councillor Mary Louther? You're still on mute.
You asked for a second, so I've got my hand up.
Okay, thank you very much. So it's proposed and seconded. Do we have anybody who wishes to talk on this? Councillor Lyn Goodman Bradbury.
I was just going to second or, and or show my support for it. I think it's a good idea. It's a lot of money, but I think there's a lot of visitors here and a lot of people to encourage them getting out and about positively in the town. So I think it's worthwhile. Thank you.
Thank you very much. There are discussions locally about how we can, or certainly within the, the, the group Dawlish Against Plastic about promoting low impact tourism. And this is a classic example of that. So I think this is quite interesting. Anybody else wish to discuss this? No, so we are proposed and seconded that we add the additional two and a half thousand pounds for printing another 10,000 leaflets for walking and cycling. Can I see a show of hands in favour, please? I think that's unanimous. Thank you very much indeed. Fantastic. Number four, a separate booklet for trees in the manor gardens and progress, progress the finger post signs. So we had a, we had some funding of a thousand pounds for three more of the finger post signs that we have in various places around the centre of town. And that was in March 2018, I think councillor Foden, that was down to a lot of your hard work, looking at the signs and analysing what was there. And the proposed action to note the existing funding and when a booklet has been prepared for trees in the manor garden to receive a proposal for funding. This has no immediate funding impact as far as I can see. So it looks like a, just continue the work to, to do that and to see where we, where we push forward with that. Councillor Val Moorhood.
Just to say that this is a longstanding CAC project. And I'm glad to see that it's come up under F and GP. I know that our projects officer has been working on this for a long time, but obviously the current situation has taken so much work and it means that other things have got put back a little bit, but that's unavoidable. But I'm glad to see that it's coming forward. Thank you.
Any other comments, thoughts? Councillor Tamlin.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you now.
The three signs that you talked about, what were they, please?
I don't have the details here, but I'm sure, yes, Angie will tell us.
There were three finger post signs. Two were for Dawlish community transport and one was for, I think, the manor house to go on the finger post signs. It's actually going to be on the CAC agenda for noting next week. Well, on doing a, looking around at the finger post signs, they're not actually very accurate or pointing in the right direction. So it needs a much wider change, but that was what they were granted for, was for three signs, two for community transport and one, I think, directional for the manor house.
Yeah, I think about three years ago, four years ago perhaps, I was very keen to have a play park sign, finger sign for the manor gardens. And it was said then, well, we're going to have the new play park. Well, we haven't as yet. I mean, I think it's a lovely walk up the, up the brook to the play park. And the public don't know about it really. And there are signposts, you know, saying every three minutes, every five minutes, every six, a lot of signposts for the same thing. I'd like to see a play park signpost for people to walk up the brook and into the play area.
I think that, that's a, a good idea councillor Tamlin, but today we're not looking at the details of each of these individual ones and trying to adjust them. We're really just looking at whether we go ahead with these or not. I think there will be opportunity to feed in what these three signs will be in detail. It may be discussed in more detail at CAC. Yes, it will be. So can I refer you then to take that proposal to CAC? And if we can have the details of the, the three signs that currently proposed circulated before that, that'd be the time to have that conversation. But I would like to, right now, just propose from the chair that we go ahead with this project and we, we give it, give it our support.
Thank you.
So is there any further comments? No. Councillor John Pedderick, you wishing to speak? No, you're okay. Okay, so can we move to a vote then, please, on councillor Val Moorhood? Do you wish to speak before we move to a vote? You have to unmute yourself.
Was that a proposal from the chair?
Proposal from the chair that we.
Okay, then I don't have to second, fine.
There's no need to second a proposal. So proposal from the chair that we go ahead with this. Can I see a show of hands, please? I think that's unanimous. Thank you very much indeed. Number five, that we build three portable hands, then the hand sanitiser stations. That was easy to say in my head when I read it through, much harder to say aloud when I'm reading over there and looking over there. Three portable hand sanitiser stations to be placed in the strand and Brunswick Place in cooperation with local businesses. Could be used at other locations or events as required at a total cost of roughly a thousand pounds to fund the three stations fixings and sanitiser supply. Anybody wish to speak about this?
Yes, if I may be, Chairman.
Certainly councillor Louther, we've lost your video for some reason.
Oh, that's all.
Don't worry. Oh, there we go.
Yes, this is all part of the awareness thing, isn't it? So it lines up with the banners and all the rest of it. And I think it's, it's an essential service if it can provide it. I don't know how effective it is because I don't know how many people are going to use it, but I think it'd be a good idea to make them available. And I propose we spend that money.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second? All jumping at once, then councillor Foden, you were first with your hand up. Anybody wish to speak? Councillor Goodman Bradbury, you've got your hand up or is that to second? Councillor Pedderick, you got your, you wish to speak? Please, please speak councillor.
Sorry about the confusion, but I put my blue hand up. I thought that's what we were doing to.
Indeed, you're, you're absolutely right, but I'm now having great sympathy for councillor Foden who's been sharing these meetings with a lot more participants and trying to catch where the hands are going. And it's not as straightforward as you might imagine. So I'm sorry about that councillor.
No, that's, that's, that's okay. I fully appreciate that. Yes, I agree with councillor Terry Louther. It's an excellent idea. A couple of questions. I'm, I think the, the answer is actually here. Incorporation of local businesses, does that mean that they will take them in at night and put them in the morning? I've got some people nodding to that, yes, okay.
That's exactly what was proposed so that reduces the emphasis on council staff having to fill them.
That's right. So then you plan it as well. That's fine. That's all a bunch of that. It seems a good price actually, £30 to £45 for five litres of the stuff. Excellent. Good price. Thank you.
Okay, I think it's redundant neat gin. I shouldn't say that. It certainly isn't neat gin. Okay, any other comments? No, so we have proposal and second. So move to a vote, all those in favour, please raise your hand. And that's unanimous. Thank you very much indeed. Fantastic. And our final one, number six, lamppost signs encouraging social distancing for placing throughout the parish. So these are corex signs, these are the sort of the, like the estate agent type signs put on to lampposts throughout the place at an order or at a price of £140, £139 plus VAT, which strikes me as an absolute bargain. Can I ask quickly from Angie, if we're placing things on lampposts, we normally need permission from, I think it's Devon County. Do we have that as a pre, pre given thing?
We don't, but since they've placed social distancing measures on lampposts in various places already.
Go on, we've lost your sound Angie. But it sounds, it sounds like we have an implied, an implied permission there.
Okay, I, I, I think we haven't got upfront permission. Devon County have placed some on their footpaths on lampposts already of a similar ilk. And it has happened in other places. I don't anticipate, given the emphasis on the public health message, we would have a lot of issues because it's reinforcing a message and they wouldn't be permanent.
Okay, thank you very much. I have councillor Pedderick and then councillor Terry Louther and then councillor Val Moorhood.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, I agree with the lampposts. I mean, that's county council. But sometimes there are sort of power distribution poles that look like lampposts. There's one close to where I live and people have put notices on there, they've been removed. And then the power company put a notice on saying, do not put notices on these lampposts. So it might be worth making sure they don't go on anything that's doing Western, Western power. Yeah, okay.
Thank you councillor.
Good idea, good idea.
Councillor Terry Louther.
Yes, I agree with that incidentally, but my question really was, does that price include fitting them?
No, it doesn't include my time.
So that's yet another little job for you.
I'm very happy to accept any offers of help from councillors to help in the assistance of putting them on lampposts.
Thank you. Councillor Val Moorhood.
Sorry. Just a quick one. We don't know when this is going to end, obviously. And I'm trusting that these notices will last for whatever's the necessary time. And maybe this sounds a bit early, but I would like to remind us all that at the appropriate time, they're going to have to be taken down again because it becomes really infuriating to see all kinds of planning notices and such like stuck all over the place. So it is just something to bear in mind. And when the time comes, if we're asked to do it, I'm sure we can all go around and help. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Moorhood. Councillor Mary Louther.
Quite. I'm, I'm going to be really, really boring and ask about the insurance. If we're putting things up on lampposts that do not belong to Dawlish Town Council without permission of the owners, will we be covered if something happens?
Councillor Mary Louther.
On somebody's head and cut the head.
I can assure you councillor. I can assure you councillor Mary Louder, that we will not be putting these up without permission of the owners. If we're putting them on lamp posts, we have to have Devon County permission otherwise. So we are putting them up with permission.
Good, because I didn't hear that. I heard, but anyway, no, that's clear, that's fine, thank you so much.
I think Angie said we didn't have permission already, but I think I heard her suggest that there would be unlikely to be any problem with permission. But we would of course be asking for permission and quoting individual citing of where we intend to put them up. Round just nailing them to anything that's there. I have one further, one further request. Having spent, actually yesterday afternoon, doing a plastics litter pick on Dawlish Beach and picking up a fair number of cable ties. If we are to use anything like cable ties, please can we ensure that they are A, cut from the street furniture that they are attached to? And B, not simply dropped on the floor, as many workpeople think is quite acceptable because it clearly isn't, because they contribute to the plastic pollution that we are trying to, trying to fight. So any more comments on this proposal? Sort of lost track as to whether we had a proposal, did we have a proposal already, Yola? If not, I'll propose through the chair that we go ahead with this.
Okay.
Can I see a show of hands, please, to go ahead with this, this project? That's everybody, thank you very much indeed. Fantastic, so that's everything on item six. Recovery plan funding, thank you very much Angie for all the work on this and for progressing all these projects. It's great to see all these things happening and to be able to do a bunch of these things and to be able to make them happen. I think will make a good difference. And I think we've got a good range of different things that we're doing there, which will help the town. So I think that's a fantastic piece of work, thank you very much indeed. I'm sure everybody else in the office has been helping you with it as well. So thank you to all of you for putting these together, I think that's great. Item number seven, proposed national model member code of conduct. So we have a document from the LGA, the Local Government Association, I think that's right, to have a revised and simplified code of conduct. Now this doesn't, in my view, substantially change the, 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 the core of our existing code of conduct. But it does change the way it's worded, it changes the way it's set out and changes some of the details. Town clerk, would you like to speak to this, to explain how this has come about and where we are and what our plans for this are?
Yeah, thank you chairman, this is pretty much a culmination of the committee into Standards in Public Life Working Group. They reviewed issues across the country and then delivered their recommendations to the government. And they produced this model code or draft model code. It would apply across the board, including principal authorities, so that's counties, districts, all the way down to your towns and parishes. Generally, in the clerk sector, that's to be welcomed because over the years since the localism act came in, there have become widespread variances in different codes of conduct, whereas prior to that, again, there was only one code. I circulated this already to you as individual councillors, if anybody wished to respond in an individual role. But we have been encouraged not only by the SLCC, the clerks grouping, if you like, but also the LGA that councils as a corporate body should consider making a response because at the end of the day, it won't be just yourselves if you're still councillors going forward, but future councillors that may come on board and the requirements that they should adhere to going forward. There's been some concern, as the chairman says, that the wording has changed and different phraseology, such as they're recommending substituting the word respect for civility. And one of the comments that has been made is that perhaps you can be bullying or disrespectful, but in a civil way to other councillors and indeed staff. So it's things like that that need to be borne in mind. There's also currently a lack of sanctions for councillors. One of the recommendations was that a councillor found to be guilty of a breach of the code and it would be obviously be depending on the severity of that breach, could be suspended for up to six months. That isn't included in the code and there's concern that without meaningful sanctions, it could be the same as what we have now, that there's no real deterrent, if you like. So again, it's up, it's, it's for councillors to consider whether the council, Dawlish Town Council wishes to put forward a view. Obviously you can respond as individual councillors, the members of the public can do so and also clerks and other offices for the councils. So that's where we are chairman.
Thank you very much and thank you for your work in bringing this forward. Councillor Morehood, you have your hand up.
Sorry. Yes, I did send in a personal response when the clerks circulated this to us, the draft. I'm really pleased to see on page seven, under internal resolution procedures, we now, if we follow this, we will know exactly where we stand and what procedures there are. And I think that's very clear and I'm pleased to see that. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak? Councillor Tamlin. Then councillor Terry Louder.
Yeah, when it was sent round last time, I actually did read it through and I've read it through again. And I think something universal that's going to apply to everyone is good in itself. Most organisations have got that sort of same, same thing for everybody, so to speak. I thought it was very good actually, yeah, very good.
Thank you very much. Councillor Terry Louder.
Yes, again, I look for the core of the thing. As you say, there have been, as the clerk said, there have been various changes since the localism act, a lot of messing about and general nonsense in some places. The very core of the conduct code really is what's called the Knowland Principles. And councillor Pedrick will remember particularly me banging on time after time and meeting after meeting about the Knowland Principles, which is generally considered to be the centre code of all this. And that's laid out, I'm pleased to say, in appendix A. The wording, again, is slightly different, but the principles of that are exactly the same and I'm very happy to support it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Now, in which case, I, I read it through again. I'm, once again, very pleased with the language, I think it's quite clear language, I think it's quite nice. I actually like the, like the change from respect to civility because I think it has a wider meaning and I think it has a more perhaps up-to-date meaning. And I think it's, it's good, I like the definitions of behaviour that are bullying or considered bullying or intimidation. And I think certainly some things I've seen in some council chambers, not this one, would certainly fall under that, under that grounds. And I think it would be good to have had this in my hand to be able to call out unacceptable behaviours. And I think it's very good. I think it's, I would like to propose that we, that we as a council say that we, we like this and approve of it and encourage it and look forward to it coming forward. If people are happy with that, we can, councillor Morehood.
I was just going to say I agree with you completely, I think it's an excellent publication and none of us can say we don't know where we are.
Precisely, thank you. Any more comment from anybody? I see no hands, electronic or physical waving, fantastic. If we can move to a vote then on the proposal that we, we comment that it is not only acceptable, it's good. I think we have the words written down, well, they are in fact recorded, of course they are. We can move to a vote, can I see a show of hands, please? That's everybody, thank you very much indeed, fantastic. Okay, item number eight. So we now move into the slightly more difficult and detailed lists of numbers. We do not at this point intend to put the list of numbers up on the screen to go through them one by one. All councillors have the lists of numbers, lists of bits and pieces, and we will go through them. When we are in the council, in the chamber, we will normally go through them page by page. I'm not sure that will necessarily be the right way to do that here. I think let's start off with any sort of, any general comments on the, the attachments for item number eight, which are invoices for payment, direct debits and income for April, May and June 2020. Any specific comments, any items that people would like to query?
No.
No, fantastic, Yola, I think this, this system is actually working and we're getting there. All those hours of hard work you've been putting in to get all these things reporting correctly from the system and are working, that's fantastic. Okay, would anybody like to discuss anything in any of these documents? In which case, let us move straight forward then, and I propose from the chair that we note, accept these documents. Can I see a show of hands, please? Fantastic, thank you very much, Mr Clark, I'm afraid you're not allowed to vote, so you're not allowed to put your hands up. Thank you very much. Bank reconciliation, councillor Pedrick, over to you. You've looked at the bank reconciliation numbers, is everything in, in order and everything fantastic?
Well, I'm actually going to discuss this later with the finance officer. I mean, I've had a look, I'm reasonably comfortable, but the last time that we actually looked at the bank reconciliation was before I went into hospital in December and I think we need to talk through it. I'm happy with what I've seen, but I just want a bit of clarity, that's all.
Thank you councillor Pedrick, would you like us to accept them on, on a subject to your clarification with the, with, with, with the clerk? Or would you like us to refer them to the September meeting?
No, I'm, I'm happy that, that we accept them, providing that the finance officer and myself tonight are in agreement, I'm not sure you will be.
Fantastic, thank you very much. Mr Clark, I think you'd like to speak something on this one.
Chairman, I wonder whether it might be appropriate, given that councillor Pedrick was unfortunately detained in hospital, whether it might be worth appointing a deputy if in the future councillor Pedrick or any councillor that's given that role to check the reconciliations can step in to ensure that that, you know, vital piece of work continues.
I would be quite happy to do that. The reason we have delegated it to a single individual is that it is a complex number juggling setup and it requires somebody to focus on it and understand it from month to month and follow it. So it's not something I would ask anybody to sort of step into at a moment's notice, but I'd be happy for us to do that. I think that would be sensible, councillor Morehood.
I would like to ask whether councillor Terry Louder would be willing to stand in if such an occasion arose again. He has a great deal of experience in the FNGP.
So are we putting forward, so you're nominating councillor Louder?
Well, I would ask him first whether he would be willing.
Councillor Terry Louder, would you be willing to be nominated?
You're not-
You're still on mute.
I wait to see what Yola has to say.
Yola, you wish to speak?
I couldn't find the blue hand, I don't think I'm allowed one if I'm hosting it.
You're hosting, that's a problem.
From, from memory with the audit recommendation, it needed to be somebody who wasn't a chair or vice chair or any of the committees, which is obviously why councillor, oh sorry, not a chair, so a vice chair would be fine. So, which is why councillor Pedrick was ideal. That means that councillor Louder would be able to be, I would imagine.
Would or would not be able to be it because he's Chair of-
Ah, Chair of Events, oh Andrew, I'm not sure.
I don't recall seeing that particular recommendation.
I can't recall whether it was Chair of this committee or Chair of any committee.
It certainly shouldn't be the Chair of this committee, I would say.
No. It needed to be somebody that would be seen as independent from chairing or vice-chairing. Oh no, it would be, no, no, if it's vice chair, that wouldn't be the case. I remember it being not the chair, so it might be worth checking. But it's, it's something that I think was done quarterly anyway. So I mean, I know obviously it's mounted this time round because of coronavirus and the way we've been sending things. But I don't know that unless it was quite a long time that somebody wasn't being able to sign, a vice might not be necessary, but obviously it's up to you.
Well, that rules me out then.
Well, chairman, may I suggest that if myself or the finance officer has a look at what the recommendations were, subject to it being, it can be a chairman of another committee and councillor Terry Louder is happy to do it, then on that basis that he is it.
We haven't heard councillor Loudy yet say he's happy to do it, I think.
I was challenged by the initial open from councillor Pedrick and I think he was in hospital. I'm somebody with specialist, I'm not being well. But I would be very willing to, to assist if necessary.
Councillor Pedrick, would you like to speak?
I just, yeah, I would happily, I'd be delighted to have councillor Louder's support. I'm alive and well and unless I get run over by an egg lorry, I don't think I'll be going to hospital for a while.
Please don't stand in front of any lorries, that would be a great loss. Okay, so we have a nomination that has been accepted. Do we have, in fact, we have a seconder really from councillor Pedrick, from what he was saying, I will take that as seconding. Do you have a nomination and we have a seconder? Do we have any other nominations? No, none at all, can I see a show of hands, please? Councillor Mary Loud, would you like to speak before we have a show of hands? You're still on mute, there we go.
Just asking whether I can vote or do I have-
Yes, you can vote.
I can vote, thank you.
Yes, you can vote, I don't think, as can of course councillor Terry Louder in this case. I don't think this counts as a pecuniary interest or any other form of interest. So yes, everybody can vote on this one. So we have proposal, we have a seconder of councillor Terry Louder to be the deputy bank reconciliation person, a show of hands, please. Fantastic, that's unanimous, thank you gentlemen for agreeing to, to check that over because that saves us a lot of time in these meetings, going through and trying to explain them every time they come up. And can we now have a vote on the principal matter, which is to accept the bank reconciliations as, as investigated by councillor Pedrick, subject to his discussion with the finance officer? I'll propose that through the chair, can I see a show of hands, please? Fantastic, thank you very much indeed, that is passed. Item number 10, our last item, financial report, to receive and approve the quarter one budget comparison. Yola, I think this is one you are going to bring up on screen.
Yes, I was just going to double check that councillors did want me to do that. Obviously it's one that's pre-circulated, but I will share the screen now.
It's on its way in a moment.
Sorry, I had a computer issue literally an hour before the meeting started and I'm not sure whether I can share it, just bear with me one second.
So this is item number 10. If you can't, I would be happy to share it from here.
Oh, I think I'm, I think I'm all right, spare me one second.
I love Zoom because you can watch people's faces while they're working their computers.
Yes, okay, right. Please don't put me off. Oh, it's not allowing, yes, if you, if you wouldn't mind, I did have an issue and it's, it's not allowing me to do it. So you'll, you'll just see lots of my face, otherwise I'm afraid.
Is this what we wanted?
Yes.
I'll make it a bit bigger.
Yes, that's exactly the right one, thank you very much.
Okay. Are you happy with that? Can everybody see that okay? Yes, I'm seeing nodding faces. Let me just make sure I can see all of you. And the participants list gone. Okay, so I should be able to see your blue hands if you put them up. Yola, would you like to talk us through this one?
Yes, and I'll try very hard not to use the mouse to scroll when I can't scroll.
No, just ask me to scroll, I will scroll for.
I mean, essentially, obviously, there's, there's less spends so far this year, or less, less income, I should say, particularly when you look at, obviously, the hire and also the rent unusually, because of course we've got various organisations that do rent the manor house that have not been able to come in because of these very unusual circumstances. But certainly as you scroll down, I mean, you're very welcome to scroll down like the report as you go, that there isn't anything really out of the ordinary or showing as overspent or anything that would be unexpected. I mean, obviously councillors have looked at this beforehand. So if there is anything that anyone has sort of seen as a red flag that they, they want to ask me about, by all means do so.
So we're looking at outside services, we're looking at waterfowl.
Again, that is something that their donations have been, been coming in.
Still been coming in?
Yes.
That's fantastic.
Yes. Yes, in these times, people have been caring about our waterfowl as much as they have been each other.
I do love the people of Dawlish, they are very generous and it's fantastic. Okay, hanging baskets. Christmas lights later in the year. Moving forward, play area has been shut, of course. Skate park has been shut, but is back open again, I presume? Yes. Allotments, I know people have been really enjoying the allotments and taking great, great use out of them, which is fantastic. CCTV, now I think we have a CCTV group that meets to try to take the CCTV forward, because I noticed we have £5,000 in there for redevelopment and for enhancing our CCTV. Now, given some of the issues we've had and some of the antisocial behaviour, that might be something that we should be taking forward. Can I ask the clerk where we are in terms of the CCTV working group? Is that something?
Yes, it had, it had, we had one meeting of the previous CCTV group prior to this year, prior to obviously the very unusual circumstances that all the councillors remained in their posts and in their existing committees, because there were some members who were on FNGP that weren't sure whether they were necessarily going to be on FNGP again and whether they would then be continuing in that group. So essentially, what they wanted to do was wait for all of the groups to be voted on again, to see who would be in them. But of course, we're in a situation where everybody is in the same groups and then the coronavirus happened. So we are in a situation where we could start that meeting up again via Zoom and with the existing members, if that was obviously agreeable to the town clerk. I can't see him at the moment, because I can only see four of you.
And that working group is a subgroup of which committee?
FNGP.
Okay, so it is within our remit to ask that that group be started up again. I think it is, I think it is important and I think there are certain issues around the town that we would like to certainly keep a better eye on and see what's going on and to see what is happening around the town in terms of the CCTV. Clark, I don't know how to refer to two clerks in a meeting, it's kind of difficult.
You can call me Yola.
Town clerk, Andrew, would you like to, like to sort of comment on the starting up of the CCTV?
Yeah, we can certainly get some dates in the diary. I think the membership of the group is fairly depleted following last year's election. So it may well be that we need to ask for additional members to join it and whether to extend that to members of the public.
Okay, thank you very much indeed. So that would come back to the next, next FNGP if we didn't have enough members in that group.
Yep.
Okay. There's presumably a quorum for that group, isn't there? So they can meet if they're quoried.
I would have to check, but not necessarily, because they're not, they're not a subcommittee. They are just, they are just a working group, so.
As far as I'm aware, there are still four members of the existing group that are still on FNGP now, so that we do have four existing members, I believe.
So if there were to be a quorum, then you would be fine.
Yes.
Okay, so can I see a, we need to vote on that one? Yola? Do we just push it?
Sorry, on what point, chairman?
On getting the CCTV working group back up again and working.
No, I don't believe so. That's something that the, us in the office can sort.
Okay, thank you very much indeed. I see councillor Lyn G B raised her hand.
Yes, I did. And then I put it down again. I was going to say that I remember that just before it all kicked off, I was a member of the CCTV group and we did meet, but there were, we had, there were some technical difficulties as to what we could do, but we would still be able to get back together. That was all I was going to say.
Okay, thank you very much indeed.
Actually, one thing I do remember from that is, once the group was established, we were going to organise a walk around, I think, with the, the guy that had come before. But obviously a lot of time had passed and a report hadn't been given. So again, it will be contacting that company, make sure, I'm assuming you will be able to come out at this point. I know there are, depending on the company, there's various restrictions, but certainly we can get it going.
We'll be outside, we'll be socially distancing.
Yes.
Councillor Morehead, I think you raised your hand. Not got the unmute button yet.
I know, because I couldn't find the other side. Yes, unfortunately, we had gone through this very thoroughly in the previous year, but only myself and one other councillor had been to the headquarters in Exeter and had walked around with a particular firm. We did get a quote for the last, when we, we met this first new session, but it was way above what I recalled. And so that was a bit of a hiatus, but, but I still do recall the, the outline of what we were looking at.
So it's a piece of work we need to get going again. I think the sooner we start looking at it.
Yes, we do.
Okay, brilliant, thank you very much indeed. So moving on down, manor house.
Yeah, I mean, I think this is the big one really for the account, the council. Obviously, you can see there our higher income is 0.3% of the overall anticipated income. We have looked at various options of applying for grants. In the early days of the lockdown, it was suggested that town and parish councils apply for the discretionary grant. A number did, we did, and were told we weren't eligible because we were a precepting authority, but we were informed that other town councils had been successful. The government later clarified their guidance and said, no, actually, town and parish councils are not eligible. And in the cases where councils had been paid, they would be required to pay it back. We've explored every option and at the moment we are coming up with blanks on that. So we are where we are with our income and obviously we are going to be hitting a loss on the first quarter. And even as we resume bookings, it's going to be on a slowly, slowly basis. So it is going to impact us, not severely, but in terms of that element of income, it will be a dent.
Okay, thank you.
Just to give you an idea, with, with that, that figure, as Andrew was saying, we have been severely hit. At the moment, we were at 1,700 there. This time last year, it was 12,500 for the manor house and 3,000 for the riverside. I think the riverside at the moment, when you scroll down, I think it's something like 32 pounds.
So we are looking at a hole in the finances for the year, because I suspect it's unlikely to pick up to those sorts of levels for the rest of the year.
Yeah.
And just again, on the riverside, in terms of the expenditure, obviously, the secretaries will know that our caretaking and cleaning services, that we're not being charged obviously for the riverside. So we have had a reduction in our expenditure in those areas as well. So it isn't all just income, we have had a reduction in that too.
Okay. Yes, there's the 32 pounds for the riverside. Okay, I think perhaps in September, we should take stock and see if we can look at an overall position, see, see costs and the savings, if there are any, or what cost savings there have been to the whole situation and perhaps put that on the agenda item for the September FNGP to look at the, the impact and what we, what we might do about it.
And obviously, we discussed previously and we're not quite down there yet on the, on the scrolling, but in terms of the Help Dawlish funding, obviously, this was something that had to be pretty much done straight away. It was a question of there was a need and we needed to facilitate it as soon as possible. And really, the, the finances and the mechanics behind it had to fit in with how it could be delivered. Certainly, I mean, Angie's obviously gone, but she would explain in great depth, I'm sure, the massive spreadsheet she has showing all of the things that are going on, where the money is funded. We've heard very kind members of the public who have given donations and organisations and they've given things for particular projects or purchases for various things, so such as food bags and takeaway trays and things like that. Also, with some of the, with the donations through PayPal, there was, there was one incredibly large donation from one member of the public as well. In terms of how we've put this through on the spreadsheet here, it looks very simplified. And when we've been doing the expenditure, as you would have seen on the item eight reports, every time volunteers have done shopping, that's been paid for, first of all, by Dawlish Town Council and then the payment has then come back in and been refunded. So to accommodate that, we have taken money out of an expenditure code that has fed down from the earmarked reserve. And then when the payment has come back in, it's gone back into the expenditure code and the earmarked reserve. So looking at these figures, there are figures on there, but it's not a true reflection of what has happened, where the money has gone and come in to each individual thing. So it really is a project that Angie and I want to do once, once the project is over. So you can see where the money's gone, where those donations have gone. Certainly, in terms of the shopping, that there's areas that it's been very much self-funded. So it's, you know, we've been very careful to try and make sure that everything has been covered. But you will see that there is, there has been spend, obviously. Certainly, other than Help Dawlish, the spend that is showing at the moment is to do with IT, obviously facilitating, working remotely, et cetera. And obviously, all the things that are required for the new coronavirus, for the certain equipment.
Thank you. This, this prompts me at this point to say two particular things. One is thank you to all of you for doing all the things that you did, that you are doing, you're continuing to do it with the Helping Dawlish. You don't think about the, the impact of thinking about how you move the money around and how you deal with donations that come in and everything else. It's, it's non trivial, especially with all of the accounting rules and regimes that we have to comply with. So thank you very much for doing that. Thank you to everybody who was involved in delivering the Helping Dawlish. And a massive thank you to all of those fantastic people in Dawlish who donate towards it as well. I think what you have achieved, what collectively we have achieved as a town council, shouldn't be underestimated in terms of the flexibility, adaptation and actually getting out there and helping people when they need it. I think it's fantastic. So a massive thank you, a sort of, I propose a sort of a formal vote of thanks to all of you for doing all of that. And the fact that it continues to sort of show up and cause strange hiccups, like in the financing that we're seeing today, which you wouldn't even have expected, shows the level of work and dedication that you've been putting in. So thank you very much for all of that. So where do we go from here in the accounts then? Oh, do we need to vote on that vote of thanks? I think we do, can we see? Fantastic, I think that's everybody, so it's brilliant, so. Wonderful, okay. Anything else in this? We're on page five of five, so it must be at the end. So the story overall is that we're down on the income, we're down on a few expenses, but not as much as the income. Helping Dawlish has been a interesting financial journey to go through. I'll have a report on the, the details of it when it all settles down. September or October, depending on how things, things pan out. Any comments or questions on this particular item, which is our last item of the evening?
I don't know if you can see, but councillor Morehead has her hand raised, chairman.
Oh, oh, there we are, councillor Morehead, thank you. Now I'd missed that. It tells me on two different places on the screen, I've missed both of them. Sorry about that, councillor Morehead.
I would just, oh, sorry, hang on, unmute, right.
Oh, you've just muted though.
I'll just unshare. So we go back.
You're muted still.
Right, I just would like to make an observation that in not such an enormous way, we're in the same position as all the businesses and all other local councils. And it's going to take quite some time to build our income up again. Bear in mind that we're mainly here as a service, but we still need an income in order to keep running. And we're just going to have to plough through it. And I know that with the team we've got in the office, we'll get there. Thank you.
Yep, here, here. Okay, so can we, on that, that nice positive note, can we take a vote to receive and approve the quarter one budget comparison that we've just been looking at, please? Which is in front of us, thank you very much. That's everybody. And that concludes our business for this evening. Thank you very much, everybody, for your attendance. Thank you very much to the officers for being here and explaining all the difficult bits and pieces we've gone through. Particular thank you to councillor Peterick and councillor Louden for the bank reconciliation stuff again, which is again, on those difficult things. So thank you very much, everybody, and I draw the meeting to a close.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we're off air.